Welcome, everyone. I call the July 13th, 2021 Bothell Regular City Council Meeting to Order. To start with, I would like to invite everyone to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Please unmute your microphones and turn off your video while we display the banner, and I will give everyone a moment to do that. Please join in, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So, prior to our meeting, we had a memorial for the one-year observance of the passing of Officer Shoup, and I'd like to take and have a moment of silence in observance in honor of that. So, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote-meeting format. So, we have a proclamation 2028 regarding open-public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally. Sign-up sheets were provided to the cities by the city clerk's office via link in the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded, available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. At this point, we'll take a moment for roll-call of councilmembers by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McCollis.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. So, for meeting agenda approval, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Mayor Olson, I believe there was a motion to, because we have an executive session this evening, I believe it might be in the best interest to do council conversations prior to moving into the executive session, if the council approves such a change.
All right. So, do we need a motion and second and approval?
Just a quick show of hands to make sure that, excuse me, that that's okay with everyone?
No objections.
Yeah, that there's no objections.
All right, seeing none, we shall move the council conversations to before the executive session. All right, Councilmember Doer.
I'm of approval of the consent agenda.
We're not to the consent agenda yet.
Sorry.
We have a couple items ahead of that. So, all right. So, we have our upcoming public engagements first, and we have the Virtual Sound Transit Board Meeting on July 22nd, 1:30 to 4 o'clock. Share your thoughts on the SR522 and the Northeast 145th BRT Project, very important for Bothell and the entire North Shore community. So, there's more information at www.sountransit.org. And then, we have applications for the pop-up retail market are due by July 25th. Opportunities for the low-cost retail space and business mentoring in downtown Bothell, supporting minority and women-owned businesses. So, more information at www BothellWa.gov. All right, to do public engage. All right, so, we have a staff briefing tonight, and I believe we have Jeff Smith with Development Services.
All righty. Thank you, Mayor Olson, members of the council. I appreciate that. I am going to share my screen. It might take me a minute here, but we will get this. Okay, Robin, am I on?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight is a very exciting night for community development and for our development partners and community members around the city. We're going to take a few minutes here. We're going to walk you through one of our, one of what we believe to be one of our greatest success stories in development in Bothell. This is a neighborhood known as Poets Cove. Some of you may recognize it, recognize the name. It is a rather unique development in central Bothell. It's just north of the county line, near 240th and Bothell Everett Highway. The important thing about this is that, as I said here on the screen, landmark preservation meets innovative and modern neighborhood design. Okay, so, Poets Cove is a project there in the center of your screen, in the photo, that actually began a very long time ago. It began back in 2006, and it has been progressing for all the years in between 2006 and now. I happen to have been involved in it from the very beginning, so I'm quite familiar with this piece of property. This property has experienced three owners throughout its development history, a couple of city councils, so some of you might recognize it, some of you won't recognize it. A very committed landmark preservation board and a dedicated city staff, all working together to keep a vision for integrated neighborhood development, to keep that vision alive. The site of Poets Cove would, at first blush, make most people run away, quite frankly. It is a challenging site. It has a lot of wetlands and difficult property to be developed, but it's also private property. And we encourage good development. We encourage development that is appropriate to the land form and that it respects the land. And throughout the various iterations of project development on this site, that's the thing that stands out the most, is that the development footprint of this project was condensed. This was long before we had cluster PUDs, as some of you are familiar with. Yet, the original developers of the site and each subsequent owner, including the latest one, who you'll hear from in just a moment, Mr. Jed Murphy, really embraced the idea of a development that fit the land form well. So, there's extensive wetlands, and Little Swamp Creek Corridor flows through this property, as you can see by this map. The unique, one of the unique things that happened on this is that the city council at the time, this is probably back in, oh, I'm going to say around 2010, I'm not entirely sure, took an innovative approach to this. We knew there was a historic dwelling on the property that we wanted to have preserved. And at the time, the developer-owner of this property indicated to us that in order to afford to do all of that, there had to be economic feasibility to go with this. And so, the council entered into an agreement with this developer and said, "We will allow averaging of certain wetland buffers, some slight modifications. We got some restoration of wetlands and areas like that in exchange for them committing to preserving this house, particularly this, you'll see it in a minute, the original farmhouse on this property that is one of the oldest structures in Bothell." Landmark Preservation Board all along has been a partner in listening and in guiding the development of this property and the restoration of this house. Mr. Murphy will speak more to that in just a minute. But again, the council at the time opted to leverage, you know, some give and take on this in order to get, in order to get the house, to get the economics to work so that the house could be preserved. And so, it's important to take note of the rather Swiss cheese-looking aspect of this property and the homes that now occupy. And if you haven't had a chance, or if you do get a chance in the next few days, take a drive up there and take a look. It's really, it's really quite interesting and a really outstanding outcome. So, what I wanted to just say to you guys, and Jed will go into more detail about this, but Poets Cove, as it turns out, is a subdivision with a historic heart. And it demonstrates a respect for the land, a respect for history, all together with economic and market feasibility. This is very important, and it can be done, and it was done at Poets Cove. So, I would like to welcome you to listen to Mr. Murphy, and he can explain to you more in detail about how this project came together and the result that we now enjoy. So, with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and Mr. Jed Murphy will take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mayor Olson and members of the council, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity tonight to, not necessarily discuss the project in detail, but allow the council an opportunity to not just hear a developer complaining, a builder that has got an issue. I think that this community, as Jeff referenced, has a heart, is truly one for the books. And if there's one takeaway this evening from what I have to say, it is working with the staff in planning, in building, in public works, and specifically working with Sarah with the Historical Landmark Board was an absolute pleasure. Most builders, developers that do horizontal and vertical integration would run from this project. In 2015, my company that I manage, Legacy Homes of Washington, acquired the project, and I can remember sitting in City Hall and Jeff going, "Do you really understand what you're getting yourself into?" And I said, "Absolutely." We were well aware of some of the challenges. In 2015, when we did acquire the property, to say there were challenges, but to put it lightly, again, won't go into too much of the minutia of the plot development, but it was very complex. We ended up installing a bridge over a wetland, and we did significant buffer restoration on about 40% of the six-acre site. This site had gone through not only challenging development, but we completed the project during the COVID-19 pandemic. The city staff, the ability for the professionalism of the city staff, I would, I can't speak highly enough about the city staff in Development Services. Truly, truly all-stars, extremely knowledgeable, extremely helpful, and willing to go to great lengths to explore how I, as developer and builder, can navigate a challenging project that not only, you know, we have to follow the approved plans, but inside of those approved plans, we had to deviate at times, and we had to make alterations, and we had to re-permit items. And it was a LID project that had a previous pavement, which I'll also get to in a second. But, you know, we had to build all the homes before we could actually build the road, or else the road would be damaged and be completely counteract what the previous pavement does. So, we were the first development in the city of Bothell to be granted permission to do such. And what was most exciting was a three-year process working with the Landmark Board. And when I say three years, it literally was three years. I'll reiterate that most people would say it's impossible and try to convince staff to bring to council the ability to demolish and destroy a piece of Bothell history, whether that's Bothell, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Bellevue, I've worked in all the jurisdictions. Most people would approach that, where myself and my team took it on, to be frank, almost as a challenge, like, "Let's do this, and let's really see how well we can achieve the goals that the historical nomination had." I'm going to share a couple of photos and get my slideshow going here, so bear with me just one moment. As Jeff had said, you know, this particular home was the catalyst to allow the Poets Cove subdivision to be created, which originally started off as a multifamily, and we ended up going through a offspring lot subdivision to make it even more complicated, which that is now recorded and done, and the community is occupied. Jeff had mentioned that this is one of the oldest homes, and I believe this is the oldest habitable home in the city of Bothell. This was August and Anna Bartelson, who immigrated to Bothell with Mr. and Mrs. Bothell. The timber that was used in the construction of the home came from Mr. and Mrs. Bothell's timber mill. One of the very first schools that was in the Bothell School District was located on the 140-acre Bartelson Homestead. All of this was taken into consideration when we acquired the project and when we moved the home onto the property, well, it was on the property, but when we had to relocate it on the property to its permanent space. So, the following slides hopefully will give you a little bit of insight into how this structure went from relocated to preserved. So, Slide 1 is after we weed-whacked and discovered what we actually had. That was the home that used to sit on Bothell Everett Highway, where Waterbrook Townhomes now is. Steve Cox moved it to this property, I believe in 2006. You'll see this was, again, an undertaking, and dependent on familiarity with the landmark and the nomination form of this particular house, we had to do an absolute period-correct restoration. That means matching the siding, matching the trim, matching the windows to 1884. I will go back and reiterate how important that Landmark Board was. Sarah was a phenomenal resource for me to make sure that I was following protocol. And the board with their, as a whole, with their distinct backgrounds and diverse backgrounds, all gave me information that allowed me to succeed. The Poets Cove project as a whole, I view as a true team effort between developer-owner, city staff, and the Landmark Board. And obviously, council's approval at the time to, I'm not speaking out of school, but take a risk that somebody can pull off what the intent was. After the, this structure was relocated, this is where it was on Dunnage, and it was being moved onto where we ended up, Poria Foundation underneath. You can see here the actual structure being moved onto the trimming. Again, no roads. We had to do this all before any of our horizontal development had to go into effect. We placed the home on a foundation. We had strict elevation guidelines on how high the front porch had to be to match the 1884 pictures and 1914 photographs of the home that we were modeling it after. We then completely demoed the interior, and you'll notice everything is timber frame, post, and beam, or solid stacked wall construction. And part of me passionately wanted to preserve some of the original interior structure, even though we had the ability to take it down and drywall everything. I wanted to expose bits and pieces of the past. There's a wall segment where you can see in 1884 how they dovetailed the solid beam construction together. There's some of the ceiling details of the second floor. Then, it went through a complete stripping process. We stripped the house down to the main structure members, and this is where key elements of the building department, from the building inspectors to management in the building department, we had to stop and start multiple times and really go, "Okay, are we able to do the following and still maintain the integrity?" Well, what we did as the owner is, we ended up taking this because it was considered a restoration, and we didn't have to improve it to current code standards. We did everything in our power because our intent was to sell this and make it habitable. This was not a structure that we anticipated people to drive by and look at, but this was something that we needed for the economics to be able to restore and sell and make it habitable for the future owner. So, we took it down to the minimal, and then we rebuilt the structure with new structural engineering to create a home that I see lasting another 140 years. The next slide is the finished product, so you can see where it went from structure to product. The final, the elevation is actually flawlessly executed with the same exact freeze boards, with the same exact window dimensions, with the same exact trim and detail. We did have to use some modifications from 1914 and had some latitude, but we got very close, and there's a before and after that's pretty neat. Inside the home, you'll see where we were able to update it to modern conveniences, yet still have these little windows into the past. By keeping the original beam structures, we had to add larger structural beams, just because it was not, even though we, inside the building code, we would have been allowed to leave those out and just restore it to what it was. We ended up spending hundreds of thousands of extra dollars, literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, to make this truly habitable and something that I could stand behind. Furthermore, I ended up actually giving a new home warranty with it when I sold it, which is also very rare. Another kind of shot back into the kitchen. The owner suite upstairs, we retained the original collar ties, the stained dimensional wood you see on the ceiling, again, straight from Mr. and Mrs. Bothell's timber mill. Those were the original floor systems from the second floor that covered the stairwell, but the stairwell was so short that anyone over around, over five foot nine would hit their head. So, we had to pull some of the beams back, but I wanted to keep the three that we could that gave us headroom clearance to show what they used to construct this house so many years ago. This is an aerial shot of the Poets Cove community. We modeled all of the new homes, something that was not required, but Jeff and I had extensive conversations when we first acquired the project, that I wanted to mimic the historical homes with our new homes. So, this is what the finished product looked like. And there is another finished exterior with a historical sign that gave a little bit of background that the new owner wanted us to keep. And this is my proudest picture. This is the before and after, 1884, 2021. The last thing in my slideshow, I want to encourage the council to support low-impact development, to work with the city staff engineers. We need to start looking at low-impact developments in sensitive areas so that we can keep up with our housing needs. And being the first developer that was allowed to use previous AC pavement in their community, I want to take a moment and just show you how it works. This is a cul-de-sac. That is a drivable asphalt surface, and watch the water. That's the end of my slides. And again, I want to close with, with just really supporting the staff, supporting the Landmark Board, and encouraging the council to continue the support that they give the staff in the city of Bothell as a whole. The judgment that I saw from professional staff, the knowledge, it was paramount. The ability that city staff had to think on their own and be creative with me to make a successful project. Not many cities I could pull this off in. And anyways, I just want to thank, thank council, thank you, Mayor Olson, for giving me an opportunity to talk a little bit about a success in the city and proof that things can be done outside the box. We can conform to the rules of the code, and if a developer, builder says it can't be done, and they need more flexibility, send them to Poets Cove. The proof's there. Have a nice evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank Jed for the labor of love. I was on the Landmark Board in 2006 when the first fit and start happened, and I know it was a labor of love for Steve Cox as well, and it's really exciting, actually, to see something happen there. It was a long, long time coming, but it's really lovely, and I appreciate the staff and everyone who made it possible. Because as we get, you know, more developed, and we're running up against, you know, wetlands and other critical areas, we have to get a little bit creative. And so, I just want to thank everyone involved and give a shout-out to Sarah Dismon, because she's truly amazing, and development staff as well. This is exciting, and I'm glad we took the time to get a look at it. So, thank you, Jed.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Agnew.
I just want to thank city staff and you, Jed, for doing an outstanding job. I imagine you were more excited about the post and beam than anything else, since you don't see that construction around much anymore.
No, sir. Councilman Agnew, it was, when we started stripping it down, and I know it's time-sensitive, and I could go on for hours, and I've got pages of notes that I wanted to talk about, but we ended up walnut blasting every surface of the interior, which, again, unnecessary, thousands and thousands of dollars of expenses, but we stripped it down, both for the health and safety of the new occupant and abating anything that had been put in that house from 1884 until we started, you know, really demoing it and moving it in 2012. And yeah, we tried to preserve as much as we could, and the, I actually have detailed shots of, there is still bark on the cedar inside the home that you can go up and touch in the crawl space. The bark is still on. I mean, it is, it's, it was amazing. I mean, it was emotional for me I mean, it was, it was emotional for me to, to complete, you know, and I, I built seven, eight new construction homes a year and I've, I've been in development and construction. This is my, finishing my 19th year. And this, this one, like I said in the beginning, Jeff said it was going to be complex when I first sat down with him and feasibility and complex doesn't even cover it. But at the end of the day, we look back and went, wow, this, this is cool. And I just feel super proud to be part of Bothell history.
Well, Bothell thanks you too. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, I'm gobsmacked. I don't even know where to start. I do need to get in touch with Steve Cox and thank him for his part of getting this bar, bar, ball rolling. It, it just really impresses me that if you're going to save heart and soul, it's a huge team effort. And, um, and as a, as somebody who's 5'9", I appreciate a little more headspace on some of those stairwells. But I also just love the exposed wood that you left from the original house. It's, uh, it's, it's what anchors people to history and makes them feel connected with what they call home. So, um, thank you. The pervious blacktop, the more we can put that in there, the cooler and cleaner our water is going to be. So I love that model, that demonstration. And my last comment is please don't ever leave doing projects in Bothell. We need more of Jed's in Bothell coming and putting your projects in here. You did fantastic work. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. It was a pleasure. Dave Phelps, hats off to him. He, he took big risks with me. Obviously it was an approved project when I purchased it that he went through Steve Cox, but being able to execute it, Roger Carter, as far as our civil inspector is concerned. The, the city staff made me jump through lots of hoops with, you know, respectful hoops to go, okay, are you sure you're prepped right? And I went through, you know, weeks and months of appropriate prep and we had to build it backwards. We literally built all the homes and then had to build the road. And most developers would scratch their head and the permit process doesn't work for this type of construction. So the city staff had to be flexible with me going, okay, I've got to put this permit on hold and complete these permits and bond and Dave Phelps as, as PE and Roger as inspector on, on the civil side, they gave me the latitude I needed to prove that it can be done. And I do, I hope it's embraced with, with one caveat. They, if, if the developer is unfamiliar with it, I don't think there's anything wrong with special inspections. I don't think there's anything wrong with people having to really get your subgrades right and really set it up for success. This is a, a process that you cannot screw up or else you have to start back from the beginning. And, you know, there's 36 inches of specialty material underneath that pervious AC that cleans and filters the water and it migrates back into the groundwater system. I think, and I'm a little biased because of the success we had there, but better than most stormwater systems, plus it doesn't, you know, turn into an ugly pond that is unmaintained by HOA. So this is, you know, and, and Jeff and Dave were both very specific in our homeowners association for longevity of maintenance. And I believe that the HOA is strong and, and we set it up for success in automatic quarterly cleanings and it's, it's a product, again, proper application can, can really benefit land use when we're again, up against highways, byways, mountain streams and Lake Washington and tributaries around it. So please consider it and please keep supporting it and I appreciate your kind words, Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jed, I just want to appreciate where, your innovation, your willingness to adjust whatever you need to do to make what you have a passion for come to being. I appreciate the fact that the staff and you were able to work so well together and you preserved a valuable piece of history. So please stay around Bothell. My home was built prior to the 1800s. It was a log house and I always am in awe whenever we exposed the logs. And I appreciate your pictures. I have some as well. So keep working in Bothell. We like having you here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Jed, I guess I'd just echo the, the comments that ma, are made by my council, fellow council members. I just want to say the hard work and dedication that it takes to do a project like this is actually creating a piece of art. And that piece of art, whether it be present or past, is something that is critical for the history of our community. And I just want to thank you for saving that piece of, of history, the history of Bothell. You know, it, it takes a, it takes a builder, a developer, a lot of time, effort and energy to pull off something like this. And it shows the power of working with a, a city to make that happen. And so I just want to, I can't stress enough, I want to thank you and the city, city staff for working so hard together on this and it, and it shows, shows what we can do when we work together and the power of working together. I just have a really quick question, probably going to be a very interesting question. I'm actually in the industry, but I, I'd be curious, recently a house sold in Kirkland for a thousand dollars a square foot. I'm curious, what was the original house sell price, if you know, to what it sold for
Um, Councilmember McNeil, I, let me clarify the question. The original sales price?
Original sales or build price?
Um, as far as at what point in time?
Uh, when it was originally built, the original house.
Oh my gosh, in 1884?
That's a trick question, but I wanted to see if you knew the answer.
I don't know. That, the, the restoration has, has another kind of, I'll keep it short and sweet. The person that purchased the house walked in the front door and knew all about the historical aspects of the home before they showed up. And in a time where the market, even through COVID-19 pandemic and the fact that, you know, I did sell six other very beautiful homes for some of, actually we broke the highest dollar per square foot in Bothell history for new construction with our six matching farmhouses. And the historical house sold for $1,164,000 on public record. Part of the success that I had in selling that, that was part of the original council approval for the original platte was allowing us, or Steve Cox at the time, to build a detached garage. When it came to the actual permitting of that structure, uh, at the, uh, as, as Jeff Smith had phased into management roles, Amanda Davis was my senior planner assigned on this project. And her and I worked, to say, team doesn't credit it enough. I mean, we were a team and we had to figure out how to build a accessory structure because we built a one bedroom ADU above a detached garage that really made it marketable because no one was going to, I shouldn't say no one, highly unlikely that someone's going to build, buy a two bedroom, 1,400 square foot, 1884, you know, kind of challenging to live in house, especially with any family. And, uh, um, the fact that Bothell worked with us, both in the permitting process and then when it came to actually siting it on the, on the onsite with Amanda Davis, she did a superb job, that really helped us. But yeah, the, the owner of the home now literally walked in the door and went, I know all about it and was, also wanted to buy that piece of historic art. And I appreciate you saying that because I feel like some more of a house artist than a, or a home artist more than a house builder.
Fabulous job and the new owner is going to enjoy the old growth because we, we don't have much of that left anymore.
No, sir. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you very much Jed. So yeah, I can, I can share the sentiment of the council that it was a great job, beautiful house. I especially loved kind of that last shot of the, the historical 1800s picture with the brand new one where the freshly restored one right next to it. And you, yeah, you can really see it's, you know, like a time machine right there. So that's amazing. You know, as, as far as the pervious pavement, you really, I really like what you said. You really hit the, the two key components to that. You know, as Councilmember McNeil, I'm in the engineering, uh, transportation business. And so, you know, pervious pavement is, yeah, if you don't nail it with the, the right section and then maintenance, 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 you know, you're just in for a headache. So I'm glad you really talked about those two items upfront. So, um, yeah, it looks like you, you nailed the house, you nailed the project. So, you know, as everyone else said, you know, uh, thank you for choosing Bothell to build this neighborhood.
Thank you, Mayor Olson. I appreciate everyone's, uh, your time and, and the council's time tonight. And we will be seeing each other again, I'm sure.
Great, thank you. All right, on to our interim city manager report. I'll turn it over to Aaron Lenhart.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In my report tonight, I will focus on our organization's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically the reopening of City Hall Lobby and the American Recovery Plan funding. Before I start talking about the changes that lie ahead, I would like to thank city staff for demonstrating tremendous adaptability to continue serving the community. Now for special thanks to the roughly 60% of our city family, primarily police, fire, public works and parks, who continued providing that service in person throughout the pandemic. Finally, thanks to the city council and the boards and commissions for adapting along with us. So as you know, Governor Inslee reopened the state with a few exceptions on June 30th. One of the exceptions is related to the Open Public Meetings Act, which currently requires a virtual option for public meetings. Staff are working to equip Bothell's council chamber for hybrid meetings and are targeting September for those to start. Until then, city council as well as board and commission meetings will remain virtual. There are still mask guidelines in place as well. City's temporary mask policy reflects Labor and Industries and CDC guidelines, allowing vaccinated staff to work indoors without masks unless they are working face to face with customers. So far, nearly 70% of city staff have provided proof of vaccination in order to do that very thing. We are finalizing reentry plans for staff who have been working remotely for over a year. Those staff are gradually returning to city facilities over the summer. A key ingredient for this reentry is evaluating how we serve our community. During the past 16 months, we have learned how to continue providing services while working remotely. In some cases, our customers and constituents prefer the convenience of virtual options. Council has witnessed that in a number of public commenters for your meetings as they've gone up over the last 16 months. In order to retain some of these remote options, returning to in-person services requires a more gradual transition to reopening City Hall to the public. We're planning to return to in-person services at City Hall no later than September 7th. I recognize this date is later than our neighboring agencies. And some of the reasons for this are to test new hybrid procedures, to accommodate seasonal and ongoing lower staffing levels and allow staff time to make other arrangements for childcare. There's also the potential for resurgence of the virus due to variants, which will be, we will be monitoring very closely. Due to the reductions in customer service staff and availability of remote options, once we do reopen, I am proposing reduced hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Tuesday through Thursday for public access to the City Hall Lobby. In-person opportunities will be available on Monday and Friday by appointment only. We will continue evaluating these services and adjust as necessary. Another key to reentry is a revised telecommuting policy that staff will be bringing to council for approval in September. Executive leadership recognizes that increased flexibility in work location is a benefit for our staff as well as the environment and truly a reality for any organization wanting to compete for high level talent in our post-COVID world. The policy will establish the parameters for telecommuting with the priorities of maintaining team collaboration and high level of service to external and internal customers. It's a lot of information, so I'll pause for a moment to see if there are any questions about the reentry plan. All right, seeing none. So now a word about American Recovery Plan Funding or ARPA, because if you call it the American Recovery Plan Act, which seems redundant to me. The city is expected to receive a total of $13,235,801 in ARPA funds that will be allocated in two separate distributions. The first half, $6,617,901 was received on June 28th. The second is anticipated in 2022. This money doesn't need to be spent right away. We have until 2024, until through 2024 to use it unless we use it for capital projects. And in that case, we can have through 2026. So ARPA funds can be used to cover eligible costs incurred during the period that begins on March 3rd, 2021 and ends December 31st, 2024. One eligible cost is staff to administer the funds and we are currently recruiting for a limited term position to perform that function. Staff will bring a proposed spending plan for ARPA funds to council during the mid-biennial budget process this fall. And that is my update. So open to any questions or comments council may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our, let's see, let's move on to council committee reports. If anyone has a committee report they would like to make. All right, on to visitor comments. So in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation, 2028 regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comments in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the written record. City clerk, can you please go through the received comments and if we have speakers tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Olson. We received one written comment from Madison Fallon, who wrote regarding asking for the number of citations and fines for the moratorium violations given on July 4th. That, as Mayor Olson stated, is part of the, will be part of the record. And then we have three people sign up for, to speak tonight. So the first one is Cameron Chapman. So just give us a second while we can get him panned in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Afternoon, Council. I come to you today with more unfortunate news as it relates to our growing police department. It was brought to my and others' attention that on the 4th of July this year, at around 2,200 hours, officers of the Bothell Police Department investigated or reported burglary when they brandished their weapons. Their targets were two blackmales aged 14, or sorry, 15 and 12. They detained them after this where they learned that not only were these children not burglars, but they were the nephews of the owner and they had never even committed a crime. I received a return from the records request that I filed in the form of a police report on this incident. And in said report, nowhere does it mention that anyone was detained at any time, nor did it mention that the officers drew their sidearms. I'm sure that the Bothell Police Department would like to wash their hands of this incident and focus on the loss of one of their own a year ago today. However, you cannot overlook this clear violation of public safety. Why is it that people like myself must be the ones to inform the council of police interactions with the city and not the interim city manager? You as a city council are responsible for upholding the public trust as our police force are clearly negligent. I don't know what should be I don't know what should be done about this, what would be the best for victims involved, but something immediate needs to be done about these officers' actions and clear emissions from their reports. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica Ostfield. Jessica, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hello, thank you so much. Hello, my name is Jessica Ostfeld. I am 23 years old. Thank you for having me. And I have lived in Bothell since I was 16. I am speaking both as a Bothell resident and as a member of Bothell People for Climate Action to urge you to join the King County City's Climate Collaboration and take action on climate change. I do not think I need to go into the specifics of brim predictions or the science behind climate change. I think the realities and urgencies are all too, urgency are all too clear, especially given the astounding and unusual heat wave we experienced less than a month ago. Yes, climate change is here, and if we do not act, events like this and the corresponding human and ecological loss will continue growing. And so we need to prepare. We need to take action. As some of you know, the King County City's Climate Collaboration is a partnership of local governments of all sizes, working together to accelerate climate action. Cities similar in size to Bothell have already joined, including Kenmore, Kirkland, Shoreline, and Sammamish. By joining King County City's Climate Collaboration, Bothell would have regional support in addressing climate change and access to shared knowledge, resources, and advocacy power. Following this meeting, I will send each of you information on the King County City's Climate Collaboration. I ask all of you to explore what it would mean for Bothell to join the King County City's Climate Collaboration and consider what Bothell can do to address the ever-pressing issue of climate change. Because climate change is here, the consequences are here and growing. But I know that Bothell can rise to the challenge, and I implore you to do so for members of my generation and the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we have Andrew Nelson. Andrew, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Well, first, hello, city councilors. I hope you're doing well. I'm calling to request data on fireworks enforcement during the Fourth of July. In my opinion, it's extremely important. People who violate this ban get a citation. Avoid doing it again, especially during this dry climate and heat wave we had. A potential idea would be a call citation conversion rate. I personally called into the non-emergency line, and for lack of a better word, my call was a dud. I didn't have any, they needed an address, and I didn't have an address where they're shooting them off. So the lady was cordial, though, so that was, that was nice. Applause to her. Anyways, my idea would be to put this presentation in a future meeting directly after public comment, so people who may have questions can ask them. And then after the presentation, you as our representatives can ask questions, too. I also want to say that, you know, I realize the ban is for all fireworks. I do think in the future, we should amend it to where, you know, safe and sane fireworks, little sparklers can be, you know, used. I'd imagine the percentage of those that cause fires, damage, injuries, et cetera, I'd imagine that's pretty low. But any data that, you know, BBD could give, that this is something you're interested in, too, obviously, and you, you know, would have to coordinate with city staff, I'd imagine. But any data would be appreciated during a meeting. You know, I'm asking this for accountability and transparency purposes. I will say, I'm sure that BBD did the best they could, given the circumstance. I ended up driving around near about 11, around Kenyon Park, and I saw some patrols out. So they were out there, out there patrolling. I want to say, too, that I feel for the police department when it comes to officer troops passing from a year ago, him and his family. And I hope that, you know, his family is doing well and to him, you know, rest in peace. Lastly, I really enjoyed that Poet Cove presentation. I really, I had a, you know, like that last photo was amazing, seeing from 84, 1884 to now. It blew my mind. So anyways, thank you very much for listening, and I hope you all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person I have on my list, Mayor Olson. If anybody else is in the audience would like to speak under visitor comment, please use the raise your hand function. I'm not showing anybody, Mayor Olson.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Doer.
Try this one more time. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that.
All right, thanks. We have a motion by councilmember Doer to approve the consent agenda as presented with a second by councilmember Agnew. Any discussion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCollough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Pass is 7-0.
Great, thank you, everyone. All right, on to AB 21-097. So a consideration of approval of lease of storage space for confiscated vehicles. I believe we will have.
City Attorney Paul Burns standing in for Mike Johnson.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, greetings and good evening. This item is actually kind of a repeat from a prior council action that was back on, oh, I just lost it, May, May 4th. The council approved a lease of storage space, storage space for confiscated vehicles. And that was specifically with the company of Ridgewood LLC. Unfortunately, by the time we reached your council approval, that space was no longer available. And so I believe as Chief Subolik indicated in his prior presentation, we had located three different places in which we could store them, and we went with the one that we thought was the most economical and the one that was, that best fit our needs. And so because that is no longer available, we're looking at the other two, and we're in negotiations with the second corporation right now. However, that lease isn't prepared for council review at this time, and we don't think it's going to be ready by the July 20th meeting, which is the last meeting prior to the council break before September. And our concern is that if we wait until September 7th in order to bring the specific lease in front of council, that we will, that space will also be gone. So we're asking for something a little bit unusual, a little bit out of the ordinary. We're asking for essentially blanket approval for council to, for council to get blanket approvals for the police department to rent the storage space that's needed for the vehicles that are confiscated. We understand that it's going to be in an amount over $100,000 over the course of the lease, which I believe right now is five years. And so while we don't have the specifics, we are asking for this leeway so that we can procure a site that meets our needs during the break. And then we will simply come back to council at a future date and let the council know which agency we're able to find and the total cost of the contract so that everything is open to the public. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Agnew.
So you're asking for $100,000 over a five-year span? Is that correct?
No, it's more than $100,000. I don't have the exact figure in front of me. I, if I had to guess, I wanted to say it's approximately $80,000 a year over the five-year period. Sorry, yeah, $80,000 a year over the five-year period, but I'm not positive about that amount. But we do know that the amount over the course of the contract will be over $100,000, whatever the term of the contract is. And so based on our procurement policies, anything over $100,000 has to come to council for approval.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, just a, just a quick question. The funding for this is coming out of what we already have budgeted for the police?
Correct. The only thing that has changed between this agenda item and the one from May 4th is the, the, we don't have the entity and the specific lease, but it's all the same reasoning, all the same logic, all the same. I think it's the same agenda, but with a couple sentences added, to be completely honest.
So no tapping into our rainy div fund or anything?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for clarity on the recommended action. It doesn't name like a limit.
Correct.
So, I mean, should it have some sort of monetary limit on it or? Previous one?
On the previous one, it's because we had already negotiated the lease. And so with the, for instance, with the current lease that our deputy city attorney has reviewed, it's 51 pages long. And so there's going to be a little bit of back and forth. Within that lease is the amount per year or the amount per month. I don't happen to have that in front of me right now. We have done this in the past where council has essentially authorized, I don't want to use the word carte blanche, because that's not what this is. This is definitely, we're being very frugal and very mindful of the fact that these are public funds that we're using for a specific purpose, but we don't have the, the exact amount of the lease at this time. So we are asking for that leeway with the promise that we will return at a public meeting and make a presentation about what ultimately occurred.
Yeah, you put your finger on the issue I had, is I don't want it to be perceived that we're giving staff carte blanche. That's why I'm a little concerned about the recommended action, but I don't really know what the solution is.
And that's, and we did think about it. We, like I said, we do understand this is a little unusual. We wanted to make the presentation in this format so that people could understand what we're doing. As soon as the lease is prepared and finalized, we can send an email to council. Like I said, we can also bring it back publicly to make sure that we are being transparent with the funds that we have.
Okay. So we don't know what, ultimately what the lease price will be, but it's within range of our budget, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Like I said, my last recollection is a five-year lease at approximately $80,000 per year, so it'd be $400,000.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember McCollough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be appropriate for us to at least have a cap? On, on, on the, on the lease?
You definitely could. I, it's, you, the, the short answer to that question is yes. The, the concern that, the concern that I have is if we were to do a cap and the current negotiations were to fall through, and there was another spot available, and we were able, we were to miss that because of the gap with the August break, that's kind of our concern. Let's see, I think actually I just got a message. The lease would be, I'm sorry, $100,000, $120,000 a year. For a five-year period. And again, that is to be paid for with the savings that, I'm trying to find the exact language, I apologize. It was the, the savings that we have. Vacant police officer positions, yeah. So this item is not included and not included in the adopted 2021, 2022 budget, although a range of solutions were proposed at the initial budget planning, but the anticipated budget savings from vacant police officer positions should be sufficient to offset this unbudgeted item for the proposed lease. Yeah, and it's unfortunate, we just don't have the specifics. As we've all noted, our usual practice is to bring the actual lease for council to review, and we just don't have that option. The, the other option is to simply wait until September to sign off on an actual lease that we have in front of us that has been vetted through legal. But we are unsure of the availability of the various sites that we've been looking for that meet our needs.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I think anybody that paid attention to the last meeting knows how I feel about paying to store for cars, but I also trust the people we have making this decision. And I think the more flexibility we give them, the better chance we have of getting a better deal. So I, I'll be voting in favor of this tonight.
All right. Councilmember Doer.
Move the recommended action.
Deputy Mayor Zornz. We have a motion by councilmember Doer to authorize the interim city manager to enter into a lease agreement for secure vehicle storage with any available vendor and report back to council at a future date with a second by deputy mayor Zornz. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCollough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
No.
Pass is 6-1 with councilmember Agnew and the negative.
Thank you, everyone. On to AB 21-098, consideration of a library board appointment. So I believe we will be looking to our wonderful city clerk, Laura Hathaway.
Thank you. As you know, we interviewed and appointed back on March 16th to the vacancies on the board and commissions. Shortly thereafter, we received a resignation letter from William Root on the library board. So we contacted those people that did not get appointed but had applied previously to the library board to seek their interest if they wanted to still apply. And all three of them said yes. So if they're appointed tonight, they will fill the unexpired term through March 31st, 2022 and would be eligible to apply, reapply for the full term. So we had three applications, three applicants that asked to apply for the library board at that time. We had Paige McGee, Gregory Smith, and Laura Escudé, who originally applied to Parks, but she put library board as her alternate. So tonight, do our protocol manual and having a written record of our, of our votes. We're gonna, I'm gonna ask that you use the chat function, which has been enabled tonight, to cast a vote for one of these three people. And once we tally the votes, first person to get four votes will be appointed, and we will notify them. And if we have to go more than one round, we will do so. So I'm gonna ask that you, I'm gonna call you by position order, and if you just type into the chat function your, your choice, and then we'll tally it. So Deputy Mayor Zornz, you're up first.
Okay. Next is councilmember Thompson.
And in the instructions that we have, it says to send it to you directly, but the only option I.
Yeah, we, we messed up on that setting. Just send it in the regular chat.
Way to try to follow instructions. Councilmember Thompson.
I, I. Looked at them, which is good for me.
It was, that was my error. Sorry about that. Next is councilmember McCollough. Councilmember McCollough, if, do you need some assistance with this? I'm gonna send Robin in. Robin, can you go? Thank you. Thank you. Next is councilmember McNeil. Thank you. Next is Mayor Olson. Thank you. Councilmember Doer. Thank you. And councilmember Agnew.
And Councilmember Agnew. Thank you very much. Laura Escudé has been reappointed. She previously served on the library board, so she has been reappointed to fill the unexpired term till through March 2022. Thank you. She received four votes. This chat will be part of the record, and I will notify her tomorrow morning that she has been reappointed to the library board. Thank you. Oh, we need, I'm sorry, back up. I do need a motion to ratify the vote.
Councilmember Doer.
A motion to ratify the vote.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to ratify the vote with the results with a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember of Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Excellent, thank you, everyone. On to council conversations. And then we will have our executive session following. Councilmember Doer.
Yeah, I, I feel like this is the time where we can like maybe address a little bit of a public comment. And so I, because we can't respond and it's really frustrating, I just wanted to say that the investigation is ongoing for what happened on July 4th. And you know, if you want to know what the 911 call, what the contents of that are, you can do a public records request. And I would caution people to, from jumping to conclusions based on hearsay on Facebook. In addition, I just wanted to point out, we had, as a council, we've already discussed pursuing, or at least having a discussion about pursuing, joining K4C. That's been something that I've, I know I've been interested in, and it's just a matter of finding a way to do that, given our staff, staffing and budget constraints. So that is something that Jessica brought up, and I just wanted to let her know that we, we have had that discussion and that I think we're going to get something back from staff. I'm not sure on the timing of that. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up was I noticed that the scooters are gone. I was on the trail today and I saw a scooter. I don't know if it came from Woodinville or where it came from, but I, I miss the scooters and I, I just wondered if that, that does, I don't remember voting to get rid of them. And so I, I wondered if anyone else on council is interested in bringing those back. It seems like now we're wide open and we've got bike lanes that can be used and it's a really great multimodal vehicle. I, I know that Eric, the president of Cascadia, used them all the time for meetings, so I'm sure he's really disappointed that he's not able to jump on a scooter and attend meetings downtown. So I just wondered if the rest of council or if enough of us are interested in bringing them back. So if you're interested in bringing them back, say so. Thank you.
I miss them too. I just want to say I miss them too.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if it's as much of the city or just Lime or just the companies themselves. I know there's been reorganizations, just like Uber and Jump and everything. I mean, there's that fusion between Lime and the Red Bikes that were Jump and everything. So I know there's, there's definitely a shakeup with just all the downturn that they had in, in usage and everything. So hopefully it's more on their end, but I don't, I don't think it was us telling them to leave. Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, things, K4C, I am all in for that. And I, and I remember that like we had four people that were interested in doing that. I actually had somebody reach out to me and just offered for them to come to present to council. And I think that might be a really good time to address some of the concerns around staff time that we've heard. The, the person that I contacted from a neighboring city here that contacted me seemed to think it was very minimal. So I would just love to have somebody from K4C come so we can actually ask them these questions rather than worry about issues that may or may not exist. So I, I'd love to have them come present to us. I'm sure they'd be willing. I don't know if anybody else is. And yeah, I'm all in for the scooters and they are, they, at least as of a couple of months ago, they would have been happy to come back as well, Limewood. So I, I don't imagine that's changed. I think all we need to do is just make it so they can.
Can I just add, we, we have had K4C come. I've had conversations with them and I know I missed a meeting where they did a presentation. So I don't know if having another presentation is what everybody wants to do, but I do know that happened, and so I don't really know what the next step is, but it'd be nice to, to move forward since we have the support.
Yeah, I think part of our discussion, I think part of our, I think our list of items that we're looking to discuss as part of the, the mid-biennium budget, I think that could definitely be part of that, especially if we do have to allocate some staff time. So I, I think that would be a good dovetail into that piece of it. Because yeah, they have come and spoke with us, so. So I, I think just finding out how it, it fits into our staff and our budget. Because I, I think we did have the majority of council that was interested in it, so. But yeah, just the, the trade-offs, how to make it work and find the time and the staff. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very interested in the K4C as well. So hopefully when we get into budget discussions for the mid-budget, we can have that discussion as well. I also wanted to just touch on what Councilmembers Thompson and Doer talked about in council conversations prior in the farmer's market. So I think it's important, I mean, I've talked to a lot of people in the community. Everybody wants to bring it back. They're very excited about it. But I do know how difficult this is to start up. And if the city could help establish it, many cities sponsor a farmer's market. But maybe just doing the groundwork to bring it together, do a 501(c)(3), get the permitting going, organize the volunteers, find a manager. Those are the big keys that they have to have. And maybe in our budget discussions, we can see what that might take to do that. But I really love the idea of a farmer's market, and I know that, how hard it is to establish.
Councilmember Doer. Thanks, Rosemary. I, I know that you had wanted to talk to me about that, but I, so I had a discussion with a interim city manager, and so maybe she could also kind of let you know what the parameters are for what the city can do, because I know it's a big problem as far as gift of public funds. So one of the things that I discussed with one of the chamber members was if we can dovetail a Friday market with a Saturday event, then we could use LTAC dollars in, in some way. And so that's a thought, but I don't, I think we're limited in what kind of staffing we can provide, obviously permitting and that sort of thing. But I have had that discussion with, with Erin, so maybe she could pass on to you what, what we discussed, so we're all on the same page.
Councilmember Thompson.
Dovetailing along with that discussion, yeah, I'm all in for the night market. That seems like something that could be really cool for our community is we are able to kind of come out of the last year and a half. I appreciated also at the, the Shute Memorial tonight that 101st was closed, and it looked good on 101st. And that would give us a lot more room to do cool stuff, like a Friday market and, and bring folks in. And you know, especially, and I'm just gonna keep saying this over and over again, because I guess that's what I do, if we do music in the plaza instead of music in the park next year. So we have the Friday market, we have a concert going on at City Hall, we have that street closed, we can bring different things in we want to see and have room for it. And I think Bothell could be a really cool place to be on a Friday night.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yeah, I have a situation that we can't solve tonight. I just want to let you guys know that I was surrounded by a neighborhood this last week over development that's coming right next to them. And the issue that they had, I think we've talked about this before, of when they start putting development in and they're, they're compacting the soil and that sort of thing, that they can make the surrounding homes vibrate. And I know that in a community, city that my folks lived in, what they did was when a new house went in, the developer came in and took pictures inside my parents' home to look for damage. So if any damage happened, then the builder could repair it. This neighborhood, what they had was a, one, one man had a hundred-year-old clock bounce off the wall and shatter into pieces, not repairable. Another one had his motorcycle tip over and do body damage to their car. And that's a messy story. I, I can't even tell you. I would guess probably a half a dozen people circled the wagons around me to tell me what, what, what the vibration of the soil, the, the ground did to impact them. So I, I don't know, you know? Maybe Councilmember McNeil can speak to different things that other municipalities do, but it seems like as a shame as a city when we authorize a development to go in. We don't have some contingency plan that gives a buffer of protection for who's impacted around and what, what would that look like? To just say it's always now a civil case seems unfair because we kind of, kind of set that neighborhood up with the new development coming in, so. So you know, don't solve it tonight, but if we could think of a way that as a city we could interface between new development that's coming in and protecting homes that are already established, what would that look like? I, I would appreciate it, and I think a lot of people in Bothell would appreciate it.
Councilmember Doer.
Since no one else is speaking, I'm going to be persistent and say, so far, three people on council are pro Lime scooters returning. I just want to make sure there's no one else who's interested before we end council conversations. Okay, that's four. Thank you, Rosemary. And don't forget about the Friday market. James had this great idea about food trucks, so I just gotta remember to add all of our ideas into the mix.
There's room for a lot of food trucks on 101st.
Yeah. And the restaurants are already full, so it's not going to take away from their business.
And actually, we did close Main Street to 102nd for Festival Street, and that's actually was in the plans to, to have that for festivals. So we're all got good ideas, let's do it.
And they all dovetail really well together, too.
They do.
Did you all have a good fourth? Reasonable enough? Okay, good.
I wasn't here, so I missed the, I, I heard it was still a war zone despite the, the ban.
Was it, was it cooler where you were than where we, than it was here?
I don't, what was the temperature here on the fourth? It wasn't 110 on the fourth, right?
No, what was it, low eighties?
Probably not, because it was South Carolina.
Oh.
My brother's house, so probably not, it was hotter there.
Yeah.
Well, we, we did, and I guess I organized a classic car parade that went around Bothell in these cars. And I just like to do that every year because now I realize that we don't need police, we don't need volunteers, we just decorate a few cars up and run around town and that's a good idea for the future.
Hopefully we can get that parade back next year.
For sure.
Be ni, be nice to have it back in our city to see everybody out and enjoying it.
Though, I don't miss tripping over chairs, have to be honest.
I know. It's, it's a lot, it's a really big job today with the number of people that come. It is a very big job. And takes a lot of resources.
It's worth it. To bring the community together is worth it.
We'll have a lot to celebrate then. I can't do my regular, you know, close the meeting thing, so I feel like I'm, I'm hamstrung.
Let's go to executive session.
So, all right, let's adjourn to executive session regarding litigation, potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, parent one, parent nine, and it's anticipated to last for
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes with no action following, so we will adjourn from executive session.
Do you want to take a break till 8:10 and then begin executive session then?
That sounds like a wonderful suggestion. Thank you. So we will adjourn to 8:10, and we will have a 45-minute executive session and adjourn from there.
And I will reclusive myself from the executive session.
Thank you.
All right, see everyone over there.